Let's go to the Lord in prayer first. Gracious God, we come to you tonight. Thank you once again for this opportunity to come and study your word, Lord, discuss your word. Lord, we are so grateful for Rob and the amount of effort and attention he has placed on this study, Lord. Thank you for that, and we thank you for everybody who has participated and hung in there. And Lord, we just give you all the glory for this. We ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen. And I will turn it over to Rob.
And I also want to thank everybody that's participated, each and every one of you, because I really appreciate it. It's been very delightful for me to do this and to lead the group and to teach the things that I think are really important. As I've mentioned before, these are the things that I discovered for myself, and I believe that it's almost principles of what I call the true religion. The work that I thought maybe we would do in May, I mentioned to Mark, is called a book I wrote called If I Should Die Before I Wake. And since most of us, I think, raise your hand if this is not true, but I think most of us are a little closer to death than we are to birth. So I think even the people on Zoom are agreeing, I think they're raising their hands. They're not saying anything because they're muted. And so, and since it will be after Easter, we're going to talk about death and the struggles that I had again. These are again, personal struggles I had with a fear of death and the way that I went through to resolve those issues for myself and hopefully resolve any issues that you might have or questions about what happens after we die. It's a really important subject to me, and I think it would be a good subject for all of us to learn. I do not have a study book, but I'm sure that we'll get the book. It's not a lengthy book, but some of you have already looked at it and seen it. So that's what I was thinking about doing next time, because again, it means a lot to me. And we're not going to talk about fasting tonight, Mark, because I think, aren't we about through with that? I think, you know, I'm going to go home and eat dinner, so we're not going to talk about that tonight. What we've looked at through the Beatitudes is, as you remember, we go through the poor in spirit, we saw the comfort in our sin, the mourning that we have over our sin. We saw the character trait of meekness, which is strength in humility combined together. We saw the very important principle of righteousness, hungering and thirsting for that righteousness, and then we'll be satisfied with that, which is a little bit what we're going to look at tonight. But tonight, I'm going to bring in some really interesting statistics about persecution that I think that you will be... I'm going to start off with the bad part, the bad news, and then we're going to end with the good news. You know, I'll bring you some information that is really startling to me, startling, really, really startling. So, you know, and then we went into the pure in heart, well, the mercy forgiving those who, you know, as God forgives us, being pure in heart in the sense that our motives are pure, we're cleansed from, God cleanses our heart. We spoke about the heart, and Sherri Acock sent me some really good information on that. Appreciate that a lot. And then we talked about peacemakers. That was very important, I think, last week, the church itself. And finally, we're going to finish with this last one, which is the eighth Beatitude. Mark's message on Sunday was about a great challenge for us, whether we are casual Christians or we are committed Christians. And as we talk about persecution, we realize and recognize, because Billy's question was pretty much online, is that he feels a little bit, I wouldn't say guilty, but he feels a little bit wondering, "Well, I'm not persecuted for my faith. I don't get persecution." You know, "What kind of persecution do I have?" And yet, we know that Paul says in Timothy that "those who wish to live a godly life will be persecuted." But I don't see a whole lot of persecution going on, being a Christian, following the Beatitudes. Maybe a few struggles, but not really being persecuted in that sense. So we're going to look a little bit at that and hopefully find some sort of answer to what Billy's question is and challenge again the difference between a committed and casual Christian. Because let's face it, I mean, if we had to really be persecuted for our faith, like they were throughout history or in the Bible, would we really be able to stand up for it? You know, Mark said that, you know, "Some people would rather be playing golf on Sunday if it's a beautiful day than coming to church." What would happen if we actually had to actually be persecuted for our faith? What if they gave you a question and said, "Are you a Christian?" And if you say, "Yes, I am," then you know that you are going to be thrown in jail. I mean, could we really handle that kind of thing? Really, a strong, hard, challenging question for us is this difficulty. But let's start with the basic information in the text, which I gave you in your books, and that is the number eight. It's an eighth Beatitude. You would really think, and I was hoping this series would be just seven, so I could enjoy this evening, but it's eight Beatitudes, and eight Beatitudes. Why in the world did Jesus give us eight Beatitudes? And this last one is so much different, because it's not something we really do. It's not like being a peacemaker, it's not like puring our heart from impurities, it's not like, you know, becoming poverty in spirit dependent on God. It's not like confessing our sins, it's like none of these. It's something that actually happens to us when we live out these Beatitudes, and maybe that's one of the keys, is that the eighth Beatitude is really about what the reaction to the actions of living the life of principles of Jesus. And that's one reason, but also, we don't realize, I don't know if you knew this or not, but when Jesus was, Joy Lennon and I had a little discussion about this earlier today. It was eight days prior to Jesus' resurrection that he was told by the Father that he was going to die. Now, that doesn't mean he knew that he was going to die, he said that over and over again, but it was on that Sabbath day that God said, "On Friday and Saturday, you're going to die. Friday, you're going to die, and on Sunday, you're going to be risen from the dead." And that was revealed in Scripture in the Gospel of John to him. So it was actually eight days later that that event of the resurrection took place. Now, you know, that's why he started, and Mark mentioned this Sunday morning in his message, that's why Jesus began to move things quickly. He knew that he had to enter Jerusalem on Sunday, he knew the exact time at that point. He didn't know the exact time up until this point, he was still, you know, in the dark, you know? No one knows the time except the Father in heaven. But then God revealed it to him in John, and he said, "This is the time when you are going to be glorified. This is the time when I'm going to be glorified, this is the time you're going to die." And that's when he started that process, because he knew that eight days later, he would be, you know, he would be resurrected, but he knew also this week that he was going to die. And he knew he had to line that up. That's also why he had, he sent in the disciples on this night to go into the city and arrange for the supper to be arranged. Do you remember that? It was on this night that he was betrayed, and that's the night that, and that's also why he told Judas at the table, "Go and do it quickly," because he knew his timetable was such that it had to be done exactly in precision to the Father's bidding. So it's very interesting, that eight days, also the number Jesus, you know, in the Greek alphabet, you don't have numbers in the Greek, it's all letters, so that each letter stands for a number, so if you wanted to say alpha, that would be one. And his number is 888 in the Greek language, very interesting too. And you think about, think about how that contrasts with another number. What's the other number? 666. You have 666, which is the representation for the Antichrist, who persecutes Christians, Christ and Christians. You have 777, which is the day of completeness for the weak, and then you have 888, which is the resurrection of Christ on Easter. Now, I'm going to bring that back in at the end, because I told you I have good news. It's not all bad news. Some of the things we're going to look at are really, really pretty bad news. Any questions or thoughts on that? I think that's pretty clear. In the book, I mentioned about the fact that persecution is in the Bible, there's no doubt about it. You know, first of all, you find it in the Old Testament. And, you know, when we look at the Old Testament, one of the things that the letter to the Hebrews says is, it's kind of startling, actually, and this is from Hebrews 11:35 to 40. And he talks, this is the chapter which talks about the Hall of Faith, the people Abraham, you know, Moses, all the people that lived their lives for Christ before the even new Christ. And yet, at the end of this chapter, it's kind of interesting, because it says, "Women received back their dead, raised to life again. Others were tortured and refused to be released, so that they might gain a better resurrection." We'll bring that back too. "Some faced jeers and flogging, while still others were chained and put in prison. They were stoned, they were sawn in two, they were put to death by the sword, they went about in sheepskins and goatskins, destitute, persecuted, and mistreated. The world was not worthy of them, they wandered in the deserts and the mountains, and in caves and holes in the ground." Now, these are all Old Testament people. He says, "These were all commended for their faith, yet none of them received what had been promised to them. God had planned something so much better for us, so that only together with us would they be made perfect." So he's saying here that the people of the Old Testament were persecuted. And he goes into a kind of a graphic description of that, you know? That's pretty graphic, to be flogged and to be sawn in two. You know, I don't even like getting a shot at the doctor, let alone having the doctor take out a saw on me. Pretty bad. People of the Old Testament were persecuted according to the Bible. In the Bible, the New Testament characters were also persecuted. They also went through troubles and tribulations, we know this for sure. I like what Paul said in 2 Corinthians, and this is chapter six, and this says, "We put no stumbling block in anyone's path, so that our ministry will not be discredited. Rather, as servants of God, we commend ourselves in every way, in great endurance, in troubles, hardships, and distresses, in beatings, imprisonments, and riots, in hard work, sleepless nights, and hunger..." See, they fasted too. "...in purity, understanding, patience, kindness, and the Holy Spirit, and sincere love." So he's saying that, no, "In truthful speech, and in the power of God, with weapons of righteousness in the right hand on the left, through glory and dishonor, bad report and good report, genuine yet regarded as impostors, known yet regarded as unknown, dying yet we live on, beaten and yet not killed, sorrowful yet always rejoicing, yet making many rich, having nothing and yet possessing everything." That was Paul talking about himself and the rest of the apostles, who also went under grievous persecution as Christians after the coming of Christ. So we have the people of the Old Testament persecuted before Christ, and we have the people of the New Testament persecuted after Christ. And then in the book, we have the persecution of Jesus on this night as the culmination of that. I think there's nothing greater than that, it says in my book. "And then there is Jesus himself, of course, he is our supreme example. The one who lived completely by the principles of the true religion is none other than Jesus. He created lasting peace by the blood of his cross. His pure heart enabled him to see God and enabled to see God in him. On the cross, he cried out, 'Forgive them, for they know not what they are doing.' That was a supreme reflection of his life of mercy. He was filled with God because of his continual righteous relationship with the Father every day. He rode into the holy city, meek, riding on a young colt. He wept over the sin of the world, and in his own poverty of spirit, he became totally dependent upon the Father, saying he was nothing without Him. And so, he was persecuted to the death, to the very death of the cross. He is a perfect example of us in suffering and a perfect example of that which is our true religion that we have." So Jesus, of course, was continually persecuted. It's interesting that in the Greek language, the word for persecute, and this is not in the books, I don't think, is the word deokko, which means to pursue something, to pursue someone, to run after someone. Matter of fact, it's actually used sometimes in a very positive sense. At one point, the apostle Paul says, "to pursue peace." And so, it has a very, very positive, but also a very negative connotation. In the Book of Revelation, it says that Satan, who was thrown down to heaven, pursued the Christ, but was not able to pursue the Christ, but then turned to the woman who was representative for the church, and pursued and persecuted the church. We see that throughout the Bible, but also in church history, we see the same thing over and over and over again. One of the most excellent books is Philip Chaff's History of Persecution, lengthy book, but it shows that people in the early time of the church were persecuted on occasion. It went through ebbs and it went through flows, sometimes it was hard and sometimes it was difficult. Some of the emperors who persecuted God's people were Nero from 64 to 68, and most of the apostles were alive at that point. Almost every apostle that we know of was put to death. The only one that we're not sure about was John, who lived in exile on the Isle of Patmos. And this was not Honolulu. This was a very difficult place, and he was all alone. And if you've ever been all alone, you know what it's like. Then there was Trajan in 112 to 117, who actually abolished Christianity. He abolished Christianity, he said, "No one should ever be a Christian." And then there was, one of the most horrible events was Decius in 250, and his persecution was so bad that Christians were just hauled into the arenas and just massacred, just a terrible, terrible time. There was a young girl who was named, I think, Philippi, and she was only 18 years old, and she said that she would rather be killed than to go to prison. And her father tried to convince her that she didn't need to go, but she did anyways. This was also the time in which they wrote, which was called a libelis. A libelis was a form that you filled out that said that you were honoring the emperor and that you would worship him and not Christ. This was given to the Christians to either sign or not sign. And so, you talk about being a casual Christian or a committed Christian. Some of the people did sign it. They said that they would worship the emperor, and they would sacrifice to him rather than to Christ. And there was a great controversy after that about these people who had negated Christ, who had said that they weren't going to be Christians, who had bestowed honor on the emperor, and they were either forgiven or not. There was a great controversy in the early church about that. So everybody at that time had to sign a paper that said that they were not going to worship Christ. Can you imagine that if you had to do that today? How hard would be the line? And you know that what would happen is if you did not sign it, that you would be pursued and that you would be imprisoned, you might be beaten, and finally, you might be killed if that was the case. Would that be also difficult for us today? And then the worst of the persecutions was under Diocletian in 303 to 324, prior to the actual edict of Milan, which really changed the whole situation for Christians throughout the world, when the emperor signed that edict. But it was just a horrible, horrible time. The numbers of Christians that were killed were enormous. He hated Christians, his advisors hated Christians, and they were trying to get rid of them as quickly as they could. It was a very, very bad time. But there were ebbs and flows. Sometimes you lived during a period that was relatively calm, and sometimes you lived in a period that was vicious and very difficult to be a Christian at that time. Why God allowed that to happen, we don't know, but I think the good news at the end, we'll begin to see what that is. Let me just say that during this time, there was a man, a father of the church, of the Catholic Church, and his name was Tertullian. And he wrote many works, but one of the most famous statements he ever said was this, "The blood of the saints is the seed of the church. You mow them down, and they grow back faster." And we'll see that in the end also, that's something that's really important. Today, is there persecution? Yes. Is there persecution in America? We'll address that in a few minutes. Let's look at some of the persecution that goes on in the world today. This is from Open Doors, which is an organization which has charted now for about 20 years the persecution that exists in the world today. There are 50 on the list of persecuted nations in the world of Christians. And I'm going to go through some of these just for you, and I'm going to start with the top five. And then I'm going to have a short reading on that, and then I'll point out two others that I think are fairly significant. The first one in the list, or the fifth most, is Pakistan. And in Pakistan, we have, the population of Pakistan is about 208 million people. There are about 4 million Christians, so it's fairly significant. What does persecution look like in Pakistan? And this is from their website. "Christians in Pakistan face extreme persecution in every area of their lives. Believers who have converted from Islam face the greatest levels of persecution, but all Christians are considered second-class citizens in this strongly Islamic country. They are given jobs perceived as low, dirty, and dishonorable, and can be victims of bonded labor, like slaves. There are some Christians among the middle classes, but they still are considered inferior to their Muslim counterparts and often face severe workplace discrimination. Christian girls are also at risk of abduction and rape, and are often forced to marry their attackers and coerced into converting to Islam. Pakistan's notorious blasphemy laws are used to target Christians, and Islamic extremist groups vehemently defend these laws, including attacking or killing those they believe that have contravened them." Christian churches do exist in Pakistan, but those that are active in outreach face severe persecution from society. That would not mean open doors, open hearts, open minds. So that's Pakistan, number five. Number four is Libya. And this has a population of 6.6 million people in Libya and 34,500 Christians there. What does persecution look like in Libya? "There is no freedom of speech, no freedom of religion, and a very limited possibility of any public church life in Libya. Although there are around 34,500 Christians in the country, only a tiny number, approximately 115, are actually Libyans. The majority are expatriate and migrant workers. Libyan Christians from a Muslim background face violent and intense pressure from their family and the wider community to renounce their faith. They, as well as foreign Christians, are also vulnerable to abduction or murder by Islamic militant groups and organized crime groups. Sharing your faith publicly is illegal in Libya, and those who try to share their Christian faith with others often face risk of violent opposition and arrest. Without a central government, the country is effectively in a state of lawless anarchy. There is little chance of legal justice when Christians are attacked or killed. Christians migrating from sub-Saharan Africa are also vulnerable to being held in detention centers, being abused, tortured, and extorted by their traffickers. Believers are forced into intense labor or even prostitution in Libya." That's also pretty bad, isn't it? Number three is Somalia. The population in Somalia is 16.1 million people in Somalia. The estimate of Christians there is in the hundreds. Now, I didn't say hundred thousand, I said hundreds. What does persecution look like in Somalia? "It is impossible to publicly admit your Christian faith in Somalia, and church life is non-existent. Islam is considered a crucial part of the Somali identity, and if any Somali is suspected of having converted to Christianity, they are in great danger. Members of their family, clan, or community will harass, intimidate, and even kill them. Women may be raped and forcibly married. Christians are also in danger from Al-Shabaab, a violent group that advocates Sharia or Islamic law as the basis for regulating all aspects of life. Christians from a Muslim background are considered a high-value target by Al-Shabaab, who have often executed believers right there on the spot when they are discovered. If a Christian man is killed or abducted, his whole family suffers. As the man is usually the breadwinner, the remaining family are often left unprotected and seen as a stain on their community." That's Somalia. The number two is Afghanistan. We've just been fighting there. And the population of Afghanistan is 38 million people. The number of Christians there, it says, a small number, very small. What does persecution look like in Afghanistan? "It is impossible to live openly as a Christian in Afghanistan. Leaving Islam is considered shameful, and Christian converts face dire consequences if their new faith is discovered. Either they have to flee the country, or they will be killed. If a Christian's family discovers that they have been converted, their family, clan, or tribe has to save its honor by disowning the believer and even killing them. Christians from a Muslim background can also be sectioned to a psychiatric hospital, because leaving Islam is considered a sign of insanity." And what do you think is the number one persecutor of Christians? And it has been for the last 10 years. What country would you guess would be the top of all? Anybody want to guess?
China.
China? Nope, but I'm going to talk about China, but...
I would say North Korea.
North Korea, you're right. In North Korea, the population of North Korea is 25.8 million people. The Christian population, 400,000. Surprising, isn't it? Surprising. But what does persecution look like in North Korea? Being discovered as a Christian is a death sentence in North Korea. If you aren't killed instantly, you will be taken to a labor camp as a political criminal. These inhumane prisons have horrific conditions, and few believers make it out alive. Everyone in your family will share the same punishment. King John Un is reported to have expanded the system of prison camps in which an estimated 50,000 to 70,000 Christians are currently in prison. Most Christians are unable to meet with other believers and have to keep their faith entirely hidden, so much so that even their husbands, their wives, will not know for many years that the person is a Christian, that their spouse is also that way. Secret police carry out raids to identify Christians, and children are encouraged to tell their teachers without any sign of faith in their parents' home. A Christian is never, never safe." So these are horrible examples, the top five, but I was curious too. There was a couple others that I looked at, and these are kind of interesting when you see these in perspective. Number 17 was China. China. There are a population, get this now, the population in China is 1.424 million. Very high population, 1.4 billion. The number of Christians there, listen to this, 87.2 million. 87.2. You're talking about almost half of the people in China are Christians. And what does persecution look like in China? "The church in China continues to enjoy strong growth. However, life for Christians, however, is anything but straightforward. The policy of cynicizing the church is implemented across the country, as the Communist Party relies strongly on Chinese cultural identity to stay in power and limits whatever it perceives as a threat to the control of its society. New restrictions on the internet, social media, and non-government organizations, and regulations on religion are strictly applied and seriously limit their freedom. Churches are being monitored and closed down, whether they are independent or part of the three self-patriotic movement, the officially sanctioned Protestant church in China." So there is a church there that is sanctioned. And it's not just the introduction of these new laws that impinge on Christian activity, it's also the stricter implementation of existing laws, such as the ban on online sale of Bibles. On a more local level, if a convert from Islam or Buddhism is discovered in their community and family, they are likely to face threats and physical harm, all in an effort to win them back. Spouses may be forced to divorce. Neighbors in the community may even report the practice of Christian activities to the authorities who take the action to stop them. So even though there is a solid, solid amount of Christians in China, they are considered, if they're not a member of the, quote, "state church," we'll say, if they're members of other churches, and these are usually evangelical churches, then they are considered second-class citizens. And the other one that was so interesting to me, it was number thirty-nine on the list. And since it's in the news a little bit right now, it's a neighbor of ours. What do you think it is? A neighbor of the United States? Mexico. Mexico has a population of one hundred and thirty-three million. The Christian population is one hundred and twenty-eight million. So in other words, the population of Mexico is highly Christian, and yet is also a persecuted Christian. What does persecution look like in Mexico? The increasing presence of criminal groups and their struggle for territorial control create an environment where Christians, and particularly Christian leaders, face the constant risk of being targeted for violence. Christians are perceived as a threat to criminal activities because they oppose corruption and drug use. Or because they explicitly reject any demands or requests from criminal organizations. Christians who are outspoken about the hope of Jesus in the face of drug trafficking and violence are often targeted by gangs to remove any obstacle in their quest for control. There has been an increase in violent and discriminatory acts against Christians by people who believe, who are Christians, who are bigoted. They believe that they are bigoted, xenophobic, and opposed to women's rights. Churches have been attacked and graffitied by protesters. And reports on the ground suggest openness to Christian ethics. Openness to Christian ethics in the public sphere is decreasing, even though Mexico is supposed to value pluralism. So this is just an idea of some of the persecution that you see throughout the world today. And I guess there's just, there's just no doubt that we live in a very, very wonderful country. Where we can come to worship freely, where nobody is going to treat us with great disrespect because we are Christians. And that we really don't face the kind of persecution that others in the world experience today.
Can I ask a question?
Here we go, Mark.
Because Billy threw down the gauntlet of, you know, the question about he doesn't feel persecuted. And when I'm the same way, I don't feel persecuted. And just thinking about it, and before, I'll go ahead and apologize upfront. I'm talking to myself, not necessarily generalizing about anybody else or anything else. But persecution typically comes from people that perceive Christians as a threat. Yeah, so are we not persecuted because, because I don't know what the statistics in the United States as far as total population and, you know, Christian. But it's not a hundred percent, you know, population of, you know, the states is not a hundred percent Christian. But does that give us pause to thought or think about? Are we being aggressive enough? Because Mark has a tendency to stay in the comfort zone of like-minded people. And not pushing the boundaries outside of that. And is that a reason that Mark does not feel persecuted? Is because I'm not being aggressive enough? And taking the word out?
Jean says she has that same feeling for those on Zoom. In other words, is our, I'm going to get to a little bit of that. Because I think that the history of the church is very, very interesting. The way we go through the different areas of the history of the church. And we're going to look at that a little bit. And to reflect a little bit on what Mark said, I want to talk a little bit about what is unperceived or subtle persecution for Christians. There is a book written that is very interesting. It's by George Yancey. And he's a professor of sociology, I believe, at North Texas University. And the name of the book is very eye-catching. It says, "So Many Christians, So Few Lions." So many Christians, so few lions. He says that thirty-two percent of Americans dislike conservative Christians. Thirty-one percent of Americans dislike Muslims. He says there are markers of people, and he's done this vast survey in this work. There's a vast survey of the people that do not like Christians. They are mainly white, male, wealthy, educated, politically progressive, and irreligious. They have a high amount of per capita income and also social power. Survey questions show that most of, a lot of, many of these individuals come from academia. The universities, the schools in our country. And has infiltrated the media and different areas of our culture. So that we receive kind of a subtle time. Now, they did a survey, and he did a survey for this book. And it was unbiased, but he wrote to those who were of this particular class of people. And he asked them what they thought about Christians. Here's four responses, just a selection. One said, "Kill them all and let their gods sort them out." The second said, "A torturous death would be too good for them." Now, this is an American talking about, an educated American, a wealthy American, a white American, a male probably, talking about Christians. A third said, "I'd be a bit giddy, certainly grateful if everyone who saw himself or herself in that category were snatched permanently from our societal peripheries, whether by Holocaust or rapture or plague." A fourth said, "I'm only too well aware of their horrific attitudes and beliefs, and those are enough to make me see them as subhuman." Clearly, we are seeing the type of hatred that is unreasonable and can lead to strong discrimination, he says. In type of dehumanization, one expects to proceed unfair treatment. But does it? Is it possible that indeed there is a subtle sense in which Christians are actually, without knowing it, being persecuted? So, you know, maybe Mark is right. Maybe instead of being a casual Christian, because it's so easy to do that, maybe we don't recognize the persecution that could happen to us. And maybe is actually ongoing right now. We're just not particularly aware of it. Maybe it's in that invisible realm, which is opposite the kingdom of heaven and is really the kingdom of evil. Maybe we are. And maybe we do, as Mark said, need to not be too comfortable. Maybe we need to be more aggressive, right, Mark? So you can reflect on that a little bit. And we can actually begin to think in different terms. Because Jean has mentioned about this little girl who came home because she had. Yeah, and they, and you know. Billy, do you have a question or a comment?
I guess what I was going to say is that maybe my concept of persecution is the Jewish individuals that were persecuted and killed in World War II. And the lions massacring the Christians. I mean, maybe there's discrimination against Christians because, you know, some people don't get a job promotion because they had Christian beliefs at work. I mean, maybe that's a type of persecution. And further, like Mark's saying, we surround ourselves by people like us. I mean, you know, all of Beverly and my friends are the people of the church. So I mean, maybe we're not going out to the bars and being persecuted because that's not who we are. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And in fact, in this book also, and in the article, which you could find for free on the internet, because the book's forty-two dollars. But on the internet, in the article itself, it says basically that he asked, also interviewed these people that are in business. And he asked them, would you hire a, would you hire a Christian conservative or an evangelical? And almost all of them said, probably not. No, you can't ask them that question, but if they knew, I think, if they found out that they were. Yeah, because apparently, you know, there is a, you know, a discrimination even in hiring, even in business. And that's where it's infiltrated, I think, a lot of our occupations vocations, especially since when you have pretty much the government. I mean, you have the academic sphere, then you can teach people what you want them to learn, rather than allowing them to be free to learn what they want to learn. And so what we're doing is, and our society is changing more and more that way, I believe. I believe that, you know, our society is becoming less and less a Christian society. There's more influence from this particular group of people, which is considerably small, but yet very powerful, very powerful. And they wield a lot of influence in our world today. And I think that we're going to see personally, a lot more challenges for the children and the grandchildren as they grow up in the society, so that the numbers of Christians will be declining. Are the churches shrinking? Will they continue to shrink? Well, it's pretty hard to say, but from all apparent, you know, views, it looks like there is some real problems.
Well, I heard two things today that bothered me terribly, and I took one quite personally. There's a coalition of ministers who, for years and years and years on Good Friday, have gone to our nation's capital and prayed for our country and prayed for our people. And they are told they cannot do that.
They cannot do that.
And Pelosi and Harris and some others forbid them of doing this this time. And there was, to me, a court decision this afternoon, I think at three-thirty or four-thirty, and I didn't get to hear it. But it's wrong.
Did you all hear what Linda said about the group that wants to go into Washington and pray, and they've been denied that? Or they?
They were denied.
They were denied.
And it's the first time they've been denied.
First time they've been denied.
And then University of Texas, there was a conservative group, had Easter eggs. And they put Bible verses in the Easter eggs, and they hid them all over campus. And there's another group that was out to find every egg and destroy it. And not let anyone find and read any Bible verses.
More examples.
And I was proud that it was a university that did this.
Yes.
And then, you know, there's still students doing this. And then others are out to destroy that.
So there appears to be, I call this instead of straightforward persecution. And I've read some articles that say that Americans are not, I mean, Christians are not persecuted in America. Well, in the technical word, the sense of the technical word, no, they are coming and they are hauling us off to jail. Or, you know, they are telling us to shut down our churches except during a pandemic. Or, you know, anything like that. But in a subtle way, there are things that we can spiritually ascertain that seem to indicate that through the years that we've been alive, for most of us that are closer to death than birth, that things are getting a little bit farther away from Christians, you know? I don't know if any of you grew up when you could pray in school, but, you know, that is not allowed anymore. You know, you're not allowed to do that. And the forming of Christian schools is a reason that much of this is taking place. Yes.
You know, this has happened quite some time ago. But I didn't think of it as persecution. But on the other hand, it was, it was hurtful. I was asked to help with the shower for a bride. She was getting married, and I was excited because I wanted to do that for her. But then, after we had our first meeting, I understood that they were going to serve alcohol at a wedding shower. And so I said, I will be part of this, I'm sorry. I don't believe in it, and I'm, I'm, I won't. So they didn't invite me much after that.
That was the last time you got invited, huh? Yeah.
And it was hurtful, but it, you know, I really meant, and I still feel that way.
Charlotte, yes, has another example of feeling personally a little bit persecuted in that way.
Well, just like that little girl that walked home, and that's persecution.
Yes, it is.
And that happens a lot.
Yes, it is.
To anybody that's of a different religion than you are, and they say, oh, you're not right.
Yeah. So Billy, I guess probably, did we, I don't know if we answered your question completely, but maybe we shouldn't feel so disappointed that we're not persecuted. Because maybe there's a little bit going on anyways, we just aren't aware of it. Maybe we just don't recognize it. Maybe, you know, we are being excluded. I mean, I don't see, and this is what we're going to, the good news we're going to close with is the decline of churches in America is fairly astounding, really. I mean, you know, it's remarkable to me how many churches are declining and going down. And I know even in the Methodist denomination, there's a lot of that happening within itself. So it's easy for us not to think that we're being, you know, forcefully or radically or, you know, straightforward persecution, but there is some things going on. David, did you want to say something?
I want to tell you, you know, you raise up your children, you bring them to church, you try to teach them everything to do. Then they go off to college, and you can eat and send a child to a Christian university. And the things they teach them at a Christian university are directly opposed to what our beliefs are.
Yeah, I don't know if you could hear David.
We had that experience, we had two children go to Christian universities.
And still they.
And one of them, I mean, is totally.
She's an atheist now.
She's an atheist now, so.
The professors were pushing.
That's exactly what happened to our granddaughter. She went to USM. This teacher was, oh, she was so far, Hillary getting to be elected. And she wouldn't even let them talk, she persecuted those kids. And she grounded to the head about that, and actually, she was very upset. Our granddaughter was very upset. I wonder, she probably told her.
We're hearing testimonies of students going to college and universities, and even Christian universities and learning, you know, that Christians are, are subhuman. Even seminaries.
There is only, there are not very many Catholic colleges at all. Notre Dame is not what they consider a Catholic college. Even Loyola in New Orleans, because they believe in abortion. They, and there's like, there's one in North Dakota, I think, South Detroit, that this little girl. Now, the Hays that belong to my church, they do all of it. They do everything online, and they found out there's like three or four real Catholic colleges.
Wow, so in other words, even the universities. Well, the school I went to, I was not a Christian at the time, but I think I told you that Ball and Wallace University, which is now, was a Methodist school, and the chaplain is the one that who actually counseled me to go to seminary. But I don't think there were many vestiges of Methodism at that school. I sure, and that was way back in the nineteen, early nineteen seventies. So I can imagine now it's even a little more open. Especially when you go back and you see men and women living in the same dorm. I suppose that's.
The point that you were making about these people in power that you don't see.
Yes.
And understand what they're doing. You can't, certain people can't go into a college area and do anything where they have a meeting or.
where they have a meeting or they're restricting who can do the ceremonies for graduation and that.
Yeah, so, so we're just, we're just touching a little subject that obviously could go on for quite a bit of time if we really talked about it and, and if you really think about it. So I hope we lay to rest a little bit of the sense that maybe persecution doesn't always need to be direct. It can be indirect, it can be subtle, it can be a kingdom of itself that you can't really see, put your fingers on sometimes. If somebody comes up to you with a sword and cuts your head off, that's pretty visible. But if he's cutting off the heads of your children mentally, you know, spiritually, then that's a whole nother question. So, so what we're seeing here is a, a spiritual battle. And that's where we want to bring in a little bit of the good news. Notice that Jesus has the kingdom of heaven at the beginning and the first beatitude. Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. And now he says, "Blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven." And he's inserting that so that we will be able to see that there is a spiritual kingdom and that there is, it is invisible and it is eternal, and that God has good news for us, that it isn't the end. And, and just because either we don't feel persecuted or we see things that are persecuted, or we see things overseas through open doors of people being horribly treated, horribly mistreated as Christians, we should not be too disappointed. One of the statistics that startles me, startles me, it just amazes me, is the rapid rise of Christianity throughout history. Now, I'm going to read by centuries how many Christians there were in the world, and from first century all the way up until this last century. And I want you to listen to these, and I'll go over them fairly slowly. I would hope that I could have printed them out and brought them. And this is the numbers. In the first century, there was 800,000 Christians. By the end of the second century, it had hmm, quadrupled to 4.7 million Christians, from 800,000 to 4.7. In the third century, it had doubled to 14 million Christians in the world. In the fourth century, it increased 9 million to 25.3 million. In the fifth century, it went to from 25 to 37.8 million. In the sixth century, it only increased a little bit. And historic, his, history, church history has some play to this. It went up only to 40.4 million. That was during a very difficult time in the church, the Dark Ages and things like that. In the seventh century, it only went up minuscule to 40.6 million from 40.4. In the eighth century, again, it only went up slowly to 40.9 million. In the ninth century, it actually receded to 40.8 million. So it was beginning to decline. In the 10th century, we had 44.7 million, so it jumped considerably at that point. In the 11th century, it went to 52 million from 44. In the 12th century, it went from 52 to 65.7 million Christians. In the 13th century, it went from 65 to 84 million Christians. That's in the, that's in the 13th century, 83 million, 84 million Christians. In the fourth century, 14th century, it declined again. And I think this was due to the black plague and certain diseases that were happening. The world population also declined. So the population of Christians went down from 84 to 56.7 million. In the 15th century, it began to increase again. It went from 56 to 75.9 million. In the 16th century, about the time of the Protestant Reformation, it increased considerably from 75 to 100 million people. In the 17th century, and we're getting more, more local, it went from 100 to 130 million Christians. In the 18th century, it increased from 130 to 205 million Christians in the world. The 19th century, it increased from, get this, from 205 to 558 million Christians. And in the 20th century, it went from 558 million Christians in the world to 2 billion. 2 billion Christians at the turn of the century in the world, and it is increasing even more. It is amazing what God has done. Now, there's a map that you can get online too, which shows the growth of Christianity in all these areas of the world, where it begins in a very small area around Asia Minor and increases to other areas, and the population of the Christians in these world. You take China, for example. You know, we mentioned that as a nation. That has increased 20-fold in the number of Christians that are living in China. God is on the move. Starting with 800,000 in the first century, that seed which was planted has now gone to 2 billion present Christians. That's not over time, that's currently. In the world today, there are over 2 billion Christians in the world. You see, other religions are flatlining. Christianity is growing. It is moving, and it is continuing to grow. You see, when Jesus thought eight days, when God gave him that plan, he knew that there was going to be a horrible time. He knew that he would have to suffer and die. And that night, he gathered with his disciples and told them that that was going to be the case. He demonstrated by giving us bread and wine. But he also knew the end game, that there was going to come Easter, and there would be a resurrection, and there was going to be victory. The same way with the church in history. We can look at it from a very small standpoint and look at it as though things are not too good over here. It doesn't look too good to me. And we can look at it from the wider picture, that God actually has a tremendous plan and purpose for him and Jesus Christ into the end of the world. Back in seminary, we used to debate, and we still did as ministers, about whether the last times you were a premillennial or an amillennial or a postmillennial. What that means is basically this. A premillennial, premillennial is someone who is negative. In other words, they think that the church is going to decline and decline and decline, and then Jesus is going to come and he's going to take us all away. And that'll be good. Amillenials believe that there's always going to be a battle and struggle between the kingdoms of evil and the kingdoms of good in the world. But eventually, the kingdom of God is going to win. Postmillenials believe that we are actually going to get better and better, and Christians are going to increase, 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 and increase until finally, we can see Jesus come again. And the plan and the mustard seed which was planted at the very beginning is going to be great, a wonderful, great tree. Those are for optimists. Now, I don't know which platform you sit on theologically in that, but I do know one thing, that despite the fact that persecution comes, and we may not feel it intensely, but we do see it subtly, and we others see it in a, in a very radical way, we do see that in those areas where they are persecuted greater, grows more. Sir Twain was right. He said that the blood of the martyrs is the seed of the church. And the more they mow you down, the more we grow. That's the good news. That's the good news. So, well, let's pray. Our time is up. Thank you very much for joining with us again, and I, I enjoyed it again. Father, we thank you on this special night that, in which Jesus gathered with his disciples in the upper room and shared with them that Last Supper, the one in which obviously Judas was about to betray him, Peter was about to deny him, and the disciples were about to flee, and things were going to go all awry. But we see that even in that night, Lord, when he gathered with them and he gave them of the bread and of the cup, that we see that the victory was already, that was already there. The reclamation, reclamation of the world was already set to stage. God, you knew, Lord, that indeed when Adam and Eve sinned in the Garden of Eden, that you would need to send your Redeemer to redeem us and to begin the process of loving the world, of bringing the world back to you. We thank you, God, for your love for us this night and for Jesus who died for us. Help us to sacrifice and be committed Christians, and not just casual, but become indeed what the principles of the bad, Beatitudes have taught us. Thank you for your love for us, in Jesus' name. Amen. One more thing.
Just want to remind everybody that's in attendance or might be on Zoom about the, the prayer chain tonight. Actually, it started two minutes ago. And this is really exciting. Want to thank Billy for coordinating all of this. And it should make us all feel good that from 6 o'clock tonight, two minutes ago, to 6 o'clock in the morning, I think, or 7.
Yeah, that's me.
Is, yeah.
I'm 5:30 to 6:00.
Yeah, yeah. Rob's going to be the anchor here, and.
I'm going to call all the people that have prayed already and see how they did.
Yeah.
At 5:30.
Yeah, 5:30 in the morning. But anyway, I want to thank everybody that's participating, and it should all make us feel good as a church that this is going to be a continuous prayer chain all night tonight. So thank you, guys, that are participating, and good luck staying awake. Y'all have a, a good evening, and we will talk later. Thanks.